Yitzhak Go, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Am I German a little rusty here? I think I speak on behalf of the entire board. Really appreciate all the awesome work you're doing. Executive Vice President Bochamp provided an update on Sparrow Hospital and Medical School match results. Dr. Norm, I think I speak on behalf of the entire board that we really appreciate your innovation and all your hard work, too. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Dino. Trustee Dan Kelly will now present the Committee on Audit Risk and Compliance Report.
Thank you and good morning. Let me, uh, let me first apologize for not being there personally. Uh, as my board members know, five days ago, I had major hip surgery, and I refused to allow the board members to see me using a walker. But having said that, as Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Audit Risk and Compliance, I move that the board hereby approve the following: A license agreement with Great Lakes Crystal Technologies, Inc., a service agreement with Great Lakes, uh, Crystal Technologies, Inc., an option agreement with Copas Ag Tech LLC, and an option agreement with Copas Biomass Solutions LLC.
Support is, it's a voting matter. Yes, all, yes. Do I have support for the motion? Very good. All those in favor, opposed, abstain, the motion carries.
Finally, the Committee on Audit Risk and Compliance received updates from Marlon Lynch, Marilyn Tarant, and Sarah Herbo. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly Tebe will now present the Committee on Student Life and Culture Report.
All right. Thank you, President Woodruff. I am coming to you live from the Fisher Building in Detroit. I'm so sorry I couldn't be there today, but my day job called for this meeting today. The Committee on Student Life and Culture reviewed the committee's charter, and we discussed ways to focus on the various elements of the Spartan student experience and the, and its upcoming conversations over the course of the coming year. So hopefully, we will have a new charter by the June meeting, and we'll continue to find innovative ways to learn about the things the students are doing campus. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. I now call upon Board Secretary Fletcher to invite public participation.
Thank you very much, Interim President Woodruff. Good morning, everybody. We will now proceed to the public participation portion of the meeting. Each individual who has signed up to speak will have three minutes to address the board. Your time will end when the buzzer sounds. We will now hear from Mason Vore, followed by Kate Dombrowski. Mason?
Hello, members of the, whoop. Hello, members of the board. My name is Mason Vore, and I'm a fourth-year student at MSU, and I'm a member of the Students Against Gun Violence Organization. We're here to speak about closing the loophole in the MSU firearms policy that allows guns on campus. Our current policy presents a continued danger to students and faculty on campus by allowing certain visitors on our campus to carry firearms. I'm here again to demand its closure. The loophole comes from Section 18.01 of the university's ordinances that states that "except as permitted by state law or regulating firearms, no person shall possess any firearm or weapon anywhere upon property governed by the board." The phrase "except as permitted by state law" defers our university policy to Michigan Firearms Act 372 of 1927. This act defines weapons-free zones, which include schools. However, this statute only applies to CPL or concealed pistol license holders carrying a concealed pistol. Therefore, a person with a valid CPL may carry an unconcealed pistol in weapons-free zones, including our campus. "We seek to amend the loophole by stipulating no person shall possess any firearm or weapons anywhere upon property governed by the board, regardless of whether the individual has a concealed license or is otherwise authorized by law to possess, discharge, or use any such device." This language closes the loophole that allows visitors to bring guns onto our campus and provides a basic safety assurance that a university has lacked for so long. We spoke last year on this exact issue, and the board did nothing, citing a legal counsel's advice to wait for the status of Wade versus University of Michigan. That has little chance of being resolved soon after return of the case to the Court of Appeals. We ask the board again, now, today, to close the loophole and not take risk, but catch up with every other university in the state in keeping guns off of this campus. It should not take violence on our campus for you to come to the decision that this needs to change and should have changed long ago. It's unconscionable that we have to ask again. It is the board's job to ensure the safety of its students and staff, and refusing to do the absolute bare minimum and close the loophole is a blatant disrespect to our community and a dereliction of duty. Stop cowering behind procedure. Change this today.
Mason, thank you very much. We'll now hear from Kate Dombrowski, followed by Dennis Stroll.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Kate Dombrowski. I'm the president of Students Against Gun Violence, a recent graduate of MSU and an MSU employee. In the wake of violence on our campus, I hope the board takes more seriously their duty to keep our community safe. Students Against Gun Violence has a platform of holistic gun violence prevention, and using this model, I want to paint you a picture of a more positive, community-oriented future for Michigan State. First and foremost, close the MSU loophole. In moments of great uncertainty, we need leaders who will stand up and do the right thing, even when it's hard. In fact, especially when it's hard. Guns on our campus are unsafe. In the past, the board has expressed concerns from the MSU Police and Public Safety Department about enforcement of this policy change. To that, I say, do your damn job. You are the governing body of this campus. You make the policy, and it is up to the police to enforce the policies that you set. This backwards defeatist mindset from both the board and our so-called Public Safety Department is keeping us from creating a safer campus communities. So be leaders, be bold, show our campus community that you are making serious policy change to create a safe environment to learn, work, and grow. Spartans deserve to live in a safe, well-connected, flourishing community. Policies we choose to implement right now in our moment of despair will dictate what our future looks like. Many of the proposed suggestions include locking down our campus and increasing policing. I want to push back on that and express my concerns for how that will change the culture of our campus. Our policy of needing IDs to get into buildings puts the onus of enforcing safety on students. We are asking students to make split-second decisions about who looks like a Spartan. In a similar vein, increasing policing on campus may make some people feel safer, but for many people, increased police presence makes them feel far more unsafe. When we're implementing policies, it's important to think about who gets to feel safe and welcome on our campus. But there is a future where, instead of looking for outsiders, we're looking out for each other. To increase funding for mental health care, increase services and transparency for survivors of relationship violence and sexual assault, and to make sure all our community members have their basic needs met, we need to rebuild the trust that we've lost in our community, and investing in community care is the best way to do that. We feel safest when we know and trust that the people, know and trust the people around us, and trust that the people leading us have our best interests at heart. So change the MSU firearms policy and start implementing policies that build a tightly woven, trust-based community. There's a better future out there if you take the time to actually invest in it. Thank you.
Kate, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dennis Stroll. Dennis, good morning, followed by Valerie Von Frank.
I am Dennis Straley, trustee on Eagle Township Board of Trustees and an MSU alumni. I was silent for a moment to honor those who died on February 13th, for those wounded, for those who witnessed the event, and those who live in fear of recurrence. Events like that are life-changing. If you are not aware, Eagle Township is west of Lansing, is mostly farmland. We are kind of a picture book example of quaint rural community. People born in Eagle stay in Eagle. My wife is fourth generation on our property. In the past year, a life-changing event began unfolding in Eagle Township: the possible sale of the 1,200-acre MSU property in Eagle Township, and the consequent creation of some sort of manufacturing megasite. If MSU cannot use the property for something to support and grow agriculture as the donor had intended, then indeed, why not sell it? It is your right. However, please consider this true story that unfolded in our township recently. There are many parallels to the sale of your property. A neighbor and his wife were looking to sell some land that was in her family for generations. It is at the highway exit ramp. A truck stop company offered them a price well beyond their asking price. They told me it was an amazing offer. Still, they turned it down. They knew that the neighbors and the whole community, for that matter, would not be happy for, with them if a big, dirty, noisy, busy, 24-hour traffic-stopping truck stop was built on that corner. My neighbors chose to be good neighbors. Could they have used the money? Of course. Instead, they did what was right for our township: their neighbors. Will you, when the time comes, decide to be good neighbors and turn down the megasite offers? Will you accept a more realistic offer, an offer from a local farmer? There are several local farmers who would love to own that property, including the current farmer. And in remembrance of the aforementioned and the sister survivors, please include a provision in the sale of the property to a farmer of a memorial walking trail in nature preserve to be part of the farmland. It would be a permanent recognition to those whose lives were changed forever. It would be a place to unwind and remind us that we need to support one another and be good neighbors whenever we can. Please consider being a good neighbor and do not turn our rural township into a nightmare, horror story with all of the negative aspects that would come with a megasite manufacturing facility. Thank you. Pete.
Thank you very much, Dennis. Our next speaker will be Valerie Von Frank, followed by Ted Golden, I believe, Anna Jeffries, who some of you have on the participation list indicated to the board office she does not wish to speak this morning. But please correct me if, Anna, if that is incorrect.
Good morning. I am Valerie Von Frank. I'm the president of Posse, the Parents of Sister Survivors. I hoped we would be here this morning to commend you as board members for releasing the documents to the Attorney General. I haven't heard a word about it, so I guess what we can say is that we will applaud Attorney General Dana Nessel for her courage and her staff for their ongoing commitment and hard work to bringing justice to the victims of the child rape that occurred on this campus. September 12th, 2016, we, the parents of the sister survivors, had the first news that something was amiss at Michigan State University. We learned not from you, but from the Indianapolis Star that your so-called doctor was a pedophile. 2014, your president knew you had a Title IX report of sexual assault by this person. You knew in 1999, in 1997, in 1995, there were student athletes on your campus, not all gymnasts, who reported his conduct. It's now 2023, and this university is still providing cover for a pedophile. It is institutional betrayal that has been absolutely breath-stopping. For every one of us here, standing in this room right now, there are dozens who could not be for their own well-being or for their work or for other reasons. We don't want our daughters here. We don't want them to be betrayed again, to be betrayed again. But we represent, as Posse, 200 different survivors and families. I'd like to read to you the names of each of the public survivors who have come forward, but your time limit won't allow it. Our daughters weren't victims of gun violence, but the trauma of sexual abuse will be with our babies forever. If I were to stand here for a second for every known survivor, it would take nine minutes. You're running out of excuses. That's all I'll say about that. You talk about transparency. I hope every one of you follows through. And I hope, when you kiss your children, those of you who have children, that you remember ours.
Thank you, Valerie. Our next speaker will be Ted Golden, followed by Nancy Vella. Ted, you are on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, we can, Ted.
I am Dr. Ted Golden. After my comments to you in September last year, bladder cancer struck me again, and surgery was required. I was the chief of dermatology at Camp Lejeune from 1972 to 1974. No one was held accountable for a 30-year period of time when about 1 million individuals at Camp Lejeune drank and bathed with toxic water that caused my bladder cancer. I got involved in the Nassar scandal because of a lack of accountability. Last summer, with hindsight, legislation was passed that would allow individuals like myself to file a claim against the Navy. For some, the wait for partial justice took over 60 years. President Woodruff, it appears that you had a role in causing Sanjay Gupta to resign his position as a dean because of a recent Title IX infraction. Some feel that the infraction was minor, and no harm was done because what Dean Gupta failed to report had already been reported. In 2014, unethical MSU attorney Christine Moore caused serious harm by exonerating Larry Nassar. Moore's conduct concerning her investigation and report of Nassar violated the Michigan Rules of Professional Conduct many times. Moore acted with guidance from the MSU Office of the General Counsel. Her actions allowed Nassar to sexually assault many women for an additional 26 months. The FBI would not have been part of the Nassar scandal in 2015 if Moore acted properly. Shortly after Moore exonerated Nassar, she was promoted and still works for MSU. At least, the FBI finally stated that what their agents did was wrong and fired them. President Woodruff and trustees, I ask that you, in hindsight, condemn what Moore did and terminate her employment at MSU, just like the FBI did with their errant agents. The 6,000 documents that Michigan's Attorney General requested should be released to her and the public. That would help MSU move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Our next speaker will be Nancy Vella, followed by Houston Strigau.
My name is Nancy Vella. First, thank you for releasing the Quinn Emanuel report in its entirety. I urge you now to take action to reinstate Dean Sanjay Gupta. The Quinn Emanuel independent report provides the evidence you need to determine that Sanjay Gupta was wrongfully terminated by interim President Woodruff. The Quinn Emanuel report specifically states the interim president did not follow university's policies and procedures, and in fact, violated many of them in terminating Sanjay Gupta. The report cites inconsistent and unsupported facts that Woodruff asserted to justify her forced removal of Dean Gupta. She rewrote and made up policies to serve her own purpose. Additionally, the Quinn Emanuel report concludes that two units of the university, under interim President Woodruff's leadership, interfered with the investigations of the OIE, even though OIE is to be independent. This administration's egregious meddling smacks of a conflict of interest, Dr. Woodruff's real motivation for removing Sanjay Gupta certainly comes into question after reading the full report. The report states, and I quote, "In light of Quinn Emanuel's analysis of the available evidentiary records and policies, the personal action taken against Gupta appeared disproportionate, out of sequence with the underlying investigation, and based on a factual record that included errors and omissions of relevant information and context." Who is advising the board on this matter? If you are taking direction from interim President Woodruff or the university's general counsel, you are misguided. They are part of the administration that has caused this injustice. They have refused to take corrective action. Their self-interests are in conflict with the interests of this university. Stop taking direction from them on this matter. As a board, you have a fiduciary duty to act on the information you have been provided by the independent review. The president answers to this board, not the other way around. A board is to be independent. You need to take action. This is not something you can or should be delegating to the administration. I have one simple question for the board. Whose interests are being served by the termination of Sanjay Gupta? The interim president has unjustly terminated a dean who has led most of MSU's nationally acclaimed programs. He has been a prolific supporter of this institution, and his leadership has tremendously enhanced the university's reputation and mission. Fulfill your fiduciary duty and reinstate Sanjay Gupta. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. The next speaker will be Houston Strigau, appearing via Zoom, and then Kim Popovitz will also be appearing via Zoom. Houston? Okay, I think we, yeah, Houston, are you on mute by any, any chance? Hearing none, I think we can move to Kim Popovitz, also appearing via Zoom. Kim? We can come back then if needed, if there's a technical issue. Kim, is that you?
Yes, and the previous speaker may need to unmute theirs, themselves.
Yeah, we can come back on the, I'll tell.
Thank you and good morning. On behalf of the members of the Broad Advisory Board, I would like to share an email correspondence sent to the Board of Trustees yesterday regarding the ongoing situation concerning the dismissal of Dean Sanjay Gupta. Dear Board of Trustees, the Broad College of Business Advisory Board appreciates the recent release of the Quinn Emanuel Title IX Review Report and looks forward to the conclusion of this matter. As members of the Broad College of Business Advisory Board, it is our mission to make the Broad College a recognized and leading college of business. With this in mind, we have taken a vested interest in the dismissal of Dean Sanjay Gupta. Having now read the facts reported by Quinn Emanuel, we remain concerned about the actions taken by the administration. Specifically, a recap of the report reveals the following. First, four of the five primary reasons for Dean Gupta's dismissal were not supported by factual record or applicable university policies. Quinn Emanuel did find that Dr. Gupta violated the reporting protocol. However, reaches this conclusion based on facts and analysis that differ in material ways from Dr. Woodruff's August 18th letter sent to the Board of Trustees. Second, the reporting protocol does not place greater expectations on certain mandatory reporters, such as deans. And Dr. Woodruff's and Fassa's expectation that Dr. Gupta take actions that the policies either forbid, expressly delegate to another entity, or do not require his approval as dean, appears unfair and could create confusion within university leadership. Third, the actual reporting of the incident by students and business school administrators was done in a timely manner, and no students were put at risk by alleged delay in the reporting, as asserted by Dr. Woodruff. Fassa and OGC interference with an OIE investigation is against university policy and should be addressed by the board. And fifth, but importantly, the report concludes that the personnel actions taken against Dr. Gupta appear disproportionate, out of sequence with the underlying investigation, and based on factual record that included errors and omissions of relevant information and context. Under the board bylaws, the Board of Trustees exercises the final authority in the government of the university. The board is tasked with ensuring that university employees are treated in accordance with the law and the university's internal policies and regulations. The board is permitted to take prompt action on urgent personnel matters necessary to the best interests of the university. With the facts now revealed, we anxiously await the result of your work with the administration to bring this situation and correlating lawsuit to a close in the most expeditious manner that ensures university policies are followed and upheld and that every employee is treated fairly. Please let us know when we can expect a plan of action and of immediate urgency when you expect a decision specific to the leadership of the Broad College of Business, so we can all move forward supporting our great university and the Broad School of Business. Respectfully, members of the Broad College of Business Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. We will now go back to Houston Strigau. Houston, if you're with us, please unmute and proceed with your comments.
Good morning. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning to the board and those in attendance. My name is Houston Strigau. I'm a 75th graduate of the School of Hospitality Business at the Eli Broad College of Business. I'm speaking to you today as well and support the reinstatement of Sanjay Gupta as the dean of the College of Business. I want to thank the board for exercising prudent judgment in hiring outside counsel to examine the facts around his forced resignation. I also want to thank the board for making the report a matter of public record. While I have not read all 100 pages of the report, I have read the executive summary and other highly relevant pages. I've also read the entire contents of the lawsuit brought by Mr. Gupta against those who he believes did him injustice. One of the clearest takeaways from the report is how many people who were involved in his forced resignation refused to speak to the law firms investigators. One cannot help but conclude that if they have nothing to hide and stand up, speak the truth and be held accountable. I am not a legal scholar or a lawyer, however, as a concerned alum and as someone who worked alongside Sanjay for many years while serving in the College of Business Alumni Advisory Board and as a donor to the Minskoff Pavilion, which he was instrumental in completing, I know that this man's reputation, character, and well-being were trampled upon by those involved in his forced resignation. The report exposed one leadership failure regarding the incident that led to Sanjay's forced resignation, and that was the reporting protocol violation. This is a clear example, as it can be, of the old adage where the penalty imposed is not fit the alleged crime. Based on the facts presented in the report, the Board of Trustees, as the ultimate body of authority for a fine institution, must immediately move to reinstate Sanjay Gupta as the dean of the College of Business. You not only have the authority and the responsibility, but hopefully, the Spartan will, to do the right thing based upon the findings contained in the report. It is a sad commentary that Mr. Gupta has had to file a lawsuit to compel those who, to date, have refused to testify as to what happened to be held accountable under the oath in a jury trial. Sanjay's contributions, as others have stated, to the College of Business, its students, alumni, faculty, and staff, and to MSU are exemplary. We, as a university, are far better than the wrongful action taken against Sanjay. I encourage the board to do the right thing and reinstate Dean Gupta immediately. He should not have to wait until his lawsuit is heard and settled to regain his well-earned and well-respected reputation. None of us in this room deserve to be treated the way Mr. Gupta has since last August. He has suffered enough. We live in a society where a person is innocent until proven guilty, and nothing close to the latter has taken place. I know I will not rest until I see this injustice undone, and I will continue to withhold funding of my donor commitments to my beloved MSU until this happens. I thank you so much for listening.
Houston, thank you very much. We'll next move to Michael Balo, followed by Taylor Williams. Michael?
Good morning. I just wanted to begin by acknowledging some pretty amazing people. They are here on campus. I wanted to begin by I wanted to begin by acknowledging the hard work and the perseverance of the young men and women who formerly were of our varsity swim and dive team, who, after they were abandoned without cause and on dubious financial principles two and a half years ago, instead of quitting, instead of pouting, they stuck together, they practiced together, and they had great success earlier this month at the National Collegiate Club Swim Championship, where MSU finished third overall nationally out of 131 schools. Every big school in the country was there. We also had, and that's in addition to the championship last year. We would have won this year if we didn't lose some of the graduates we had last year. We also had the top male and top female scorer out of 1,700 swimmers. Nobody could touch our number of individual championships, runner-ups, and especially the relays. The level of competition was fierce, with many former varsity swimmers in the mix at places like Purdue and Virginia, which finished just slightly ahead of us. Our athletes represented MSU proudly. Think about that for a minute. Stripped of their coaches, stripped of their funding, stripped of their righteous varsity status, MSU could not take their pride. If there's a better example of Spartan's will, I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is. Some of them are returning to MSU's campus in the fall of this year. Secondly, very quietly over the last couple of months, the battle to save Spartan's swim and dive has been working with MSU Advancement to raise $6.5 million, which was the target given. We've had surprising success with six and seven-figure donors. But we've been doing this with one hand tied behind our back because it's been too quiet. Imagine what we could do if we had the full power of MSU's Advancement Office and did this the right way, as you've seen with some of the other reports with the fundraising and gift report. You have our expertise combined with MSU's fundraising prowess deliver the win for the campus and the state. We're very close to coming up with something good here. And lastly, please make the right decision for MSU right now. Outside of the swim team, build the Aquatic Center as part of the new rec center. Waiting will cost you at least $6 million in closing off one end of the building foolishly, plus inflationary dollars, which could easily add $10 million to the Aquatic Center, which simply has to be built. A presentation is out there that was given Wednesday, which showed the drawings. Something like $30 a semester for the rec fee would provide the funding needed for the Aquatic Center. Think about that. Six cups of Starbucks. As a parent, I certainly understand inflation and see that for new attendees, the housing and food are increasing, but what do we get for that? It's just the same cost of doing business, but I get that. But think of what we could get for our six cups of Starbucks, a new Aquatic Center. I'd add that if it's okay to start a football building that benefits a select few without all the funding, then certainly we can do something for the campus and make sure the new pool is built and make sure the funds are raised and the varsity team can contribute to the rent in that building. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We'll next have Kayla Williams, followed by Mindy Arva.
Good morning. I'm not as tall as Mike. Hello, my name is Kayla Williams, and as a chemical engineering grad, I am excited to see the biomedical engineering program is flourishing with such promising students as Megan Hill. That's really neat. I also had the opportunity to dive while I was at MSU for four years, and that is the topic I have come to speak about today. I wanted to provide an update, and I also come with a request of additional support from the university in the form of a more concrete path forward. Allow me to elaborate. We started our advocacy over two and a half years ago and have been consistent and persistent in our request to work together to find a solution to this seemingly intractable problem. For those of you keeping score, this is the 18th consecutive board meeting we have had speakers attend. In December 2022, President Woodruff met separately with a group of remaining swimmers and then with our battle team, and both times indicated that a sum of $6.5 million in operating expenses over the next five years would be needed to bridge the gap towards reinstatement. Invigorated by finally having meaningful dialogue with the university, our team immediately got to work reaching out to our networks to identify more potential donors. To put our efforts into perspective, the eight of us leading this group have experience in the realm of engineering, real estate, accounting, and law. None of us have a strong fundraising background. We just share a passion for swimming and diving and Michigan State University. We were therefore grateful to be contacted by University Advancement to discuss a plan to validate conditional pledges towards supporting the return of these programs. So let's talk about the progress. We've been positively overwhelmed by the number of pledges we've received over the last month since University Advancement started validating our efforts. Despite some initial confusion around whether our efforts were still ongoing, this is purely a word-of-mouth and social media-run campaign after all, we have managed to secure nearly $1.2 million in documented operating expense pledges, plus an additional $500,000 endowment to date. Combined, that's over 200% of our original pledge drive dollar value, with only a third of our original number of pledges having been submitted so far. We've had about 126 people officially pledged to date, and we are engaged in conversations with a handful of donors who are in the process of documenting six and seven-figure gifts. This brings me back to my ask. We have a reasonable target, but no clear indication on desired timeline or next steps. We would request the university join us and actively engage in our fundraising efforts beyond the simple validation role that they have been playing to date. We have no doubt that with the full weight of the university behind us, we can achieve the proposed target and then some. We've seen momentum pick up in the last week or so following the conditional endowment pledge, and even our rivals down the road in Ann Arbor have made a public declaration of their support as recently as yesterday. I look forward to continued collaboration and encourage you all to validate my statements today directly with University Advancement. They can surely add more color to this commentary than I can fit into three minutes. Thank you.
Kayla, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mindy Arva, followed by Brian Turnbull. Mindy, are you with us? We will move through the list then. Brian Turnbull is our next speaker, followed by Sam Stefanik. Good morning, Brian.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Brian Turnbull, MSU class of 1984, and I'm speaking in support of a Big Ten quality pool for the new rec center. In my professional career with the state of Michigan as a senior assistant to the chief deputy director and later the department director of the Department of Management and Budget, the DMB was in charge of the largest building construction campaign since the 1960s. Now, this was '99, 2002. I had a leadership role in strategic planning, construction specifications, and monitoring, executive and budget recommendations, and key customer communications, and presentations involving almost all 23 state departments, the legislature, and the judiciary. The campaign resulted in three new Lansing office buildings totaling over a million square feet, renovation and reuse of the historic GM headquarters in Detroit as a state office building, building closures, consolidation of lease locations to own space, land swaps with the locals and the feds, and movements of thousands of state employees and demolition and reconfiguration and renovation of all the capital complex parking lots and ramps. So it's a big project. So I feel that I have just a bit of public facilities experience to recommend to the MSU board and administration. One of the key things that I learned about public infrastructure construction was that all the elements required to get it done are only very rarely aligned, sometimes only every 30, 40, 50 years. So it's critical to build it right, build for the future, and be forward-thinking. Look to best practices and be focused on the values of the customer base, the people of Michigan. As has been presented to the board previously, Michigan is one of the top five competitive swim and dive states in the U.S. The data shows that the people of Michigan value competitive swim and dive and aquatics recreation. Not surprising considering our 3,000 miles of Great Lakes coastline. I believe that this board and administration is the forward-thinking team that can show the vision and leadership to get the people of Michigan an MSU rec sports facility with a Big Ten quality 50-meter pool that will become a dynamic positive experience for MSU students for the next 30 to 50 years. A $30 per year increase in the rec fee for a Big Ten quality pool is less than a quarter of a percentage point added to the first-year student's $26,000 tuition room and board. A tiny sum for a multi-generational improvement to the rec sports experience for all students. So let's reach for one of the guiding principles stated in the 2020 MSU IM Facilities Assessment. Excellence, modern facilities, state-of-the-art, and commensurate with our peers. Thank you.
Brian, thank you very much. I do want to just go back up the list to Mindy Arva, who I believe is, I've been informed, is joining us via Zoom. So, Mindy, are you with us?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Can, Mindy. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Good morning, trustees and everyone present. My name is Mindy Arva. I swam for Michigan State from 1992 to 1996 and am a member of the Battle for Spartan Swim and Dive. You just had a lot of information shared with you about our fundraising efforts and how swiftly we are closing in on the target given to us. I echo Kayla's suggestion for you all to verify these pledges with your outstanding University Advancement folks. They have been a true asset and a pleasure to work with. I wanted to take my few minutes to pull the curtain back on our efforts over the last two and a half years and share an observation about our battle supporters that I think each of you, our university leaders, need to hear. As you're well aware, we have had multiple speakers at every Board of Trustees meeting since our program was eliminated in October of 2020. At first, the speakers presented themselves, lining up to share the passion and anger they felt over these cuts. As the months wore on, we became strategic in our recruitment. We had former Olympians speak prior to the 2021 Summer Olympics. We had Spartan women's team members from the 1970s and 80s to commemorate the 50th anniversary of Title IX, and so forth. When we reached out to these speakers to ask if they'd be willing to share their stories, the conversations often included a familiar theme. Why should I support a university that broke its promise? This isn't the Michigan State that I represented. I don't trust MSU. The trust issue has easily been the top concern of our alumni and supporters. Not the large $6.5 million challenge that was handed to us, not the continued wavering over whether to build a pool or not. It's trust. And we have heard this concern renewed during the latest pledge campaign. But here's the good news. We can work with you to rebuild that trust. The recent changes in leadership at MSU have given us some traction. We held a town hall a few weeks ago to answer questions about this recent pledge drive and emphasize that we truly believe there is new hope with new leadership. These messages of faith in you are making a difference. When we touted the progress of these leaders and the work with University Advancement, we gained momentum, far surpassing our original pledge totals. Indeed, more than two dozen of our pledges are new. Some of them have no ties to MSU Swimming and Diving. They are just simply excited about the prospect of progress here in East Lansing. There is no doubt that trust is keeping some of our biggest potential supporters on the fence. Supporters, as Kayla mentioned, who could put us well over that target, and may I even suggest a supporter who could help fund a new Aquatic Center. Many of those who we have spoken to thought we were dead in the water because they had not heard any announcement, any confirmation from MSU. They need to see the change. They need to hear from you, our leaders, that MSU Swimming and Diving will be returning for its 100th season. This is a chance for you to earn back some of that faith, make and hold new promises, and bring in those supporters. Folks, let's make it official. Let's bring back swimming and diving, rebuild that trust in our great university. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mindy. Much appreciated. Our next speaker will be Sam Stefanik, followed by Anthony Navara via Zoom. Sam? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sam Stefanik. I'm a junior year student here at MSU in the Broad College of Business, as well as the Honors College. I'm the current technical chair and meet director for the Michigan State Swim Club. And I'm here today to speak about my experience as a club sport athlete and the importance of having pool space for recreation and fitness. I was never on the varsity swim team before they got cut, and part of what drew me to Michigan State was the opportunity to compete on the club team. I am proud to represent this university on the club and am proud of the success and atmosphere the swim club has created. We are the largest official club sport in Michigan State, one of the largest college swim clubs in the nation, and have seen consistent growth in our numbers year after year. In 2022, our club was the college club swimming national champions, and this year we are in third place in the country out of 130-plus teams. The swim club here has considerably enhanced my experience as a Michigan State student, consistent with data across all MSU club sports that concurs. Club sports are an important part of the student experience here. Being on the swim club has presented the opportunity to travel to different universities across the country for competitions. Each time we travel, I'm in awe of the facilities that other universities provide for recreation and student fitness. Almost all Big Ten schools, even many high schools, have world-class facilities that proudly incorporate aquatics that are miles above what MSU's current IM buildings offer. Even with subpar facilities, our club still has high demand. We are reaching our capacity at our practices and for the meets we host. We would love to host more people from across the country right here at MSU for larger competitions, but instead we have to look hours away to the east or west sides of the state for an adequate pool. At our practices, we have so much interest that the pool is overcrowded, we end up losing members for that reason. Despite the adversities of our training facilities and what we have faced this semester, our club members have persevered and obtained great feats, showing determination to prove themselves and embodying what it means to be a Spartan. I can assure you that people want to swim here, whether it's on a club team, recreationally, for personal fitness, community use, or visiting for a competition. There's a larger population of people here that is bigger than you may realize who are affected by the decision not to build a new pool. In a university survey for the new rec center, a new pool is the third highest priority for students at Michigan State. I see plenty of bells and whistles for the new rec center, but there's a huge part missing. A new Aquatic Center has been identified as a major need at MSU, yet the plan as it stands right now to put off building a new pool and demolish IM West makes the situation even more dire. I may have graduated by the fall of 2026, but in just a few years, this plan will have a very tangible negative impact on a segment of the student body here. It is a short-sighted mistake not to build a new pool along with the Recreation Center, and I implore you to seriously consider all funding options to get this new pool built. It will have tremendous benefits for multiple stakeholders, but most importantly, the students. Thank you.
Sam, thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Anthony Navara via Zoom, followed by Chandler Jones. Anthony, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anthony Navara, and I'm a 2004 alumnus, and I stand before you today representing the Financial Markets Institute at the Broad College of Business. Our board was happy to see the positive steps taken regarding the transparency provided by the release of the Quinn Emanuel Title IX Review Report. As the Board of Trustees is aware, the FMI board has been following this situation closely since we were taken by surprise by Dean Gupta's abrupt and improper dismissal last August. In our view, the findings in the report support our initial reaction of both surprise and confusion when Dean Gupta's dismissal was announced. It remains our view that Dean Gupta was treated unfairly and inconsistently, and the disciplinary actions brought against him were unreasonable. In the report, it was revealed that four of the five reasons for his dismissal were not supported by specific facts or university policies. Additionally, his deanship did not bring about a higher threshold for mandatory reporting as initially suggested. We are also concerned about the efforts made to encourage the faculty and staff to not cooperate with this outside investigation that was approved by this Board of Trustees. Why would the administration do this, and who gained from that action? And most importantly, to quote the Quinn Emanuel report directly, "In light of Quinn Emanuel's analysis of the available evidentiary record and policies, the personnel actions taken against Gupta appear disproportionate, out of sequence, and with the underlying investigation based on a factual record that includes errors and omissions of relevant information and context." We noticed that the report does highlight Dr. Gupta's successful record at MSU, and our board has witnessed this firsthand. Dean Gupta's actions and leadership have helped the Broad College continue to improve in the national rankings, and the school is home to multiple highly-ranked programs. The FMI students and alumni of the program have benefited from these gains, and our board holds their well-being as the highest priority. We all seek fairness and equity in our careers and lives, and this haphazard and sloppy disciplinary process is an example of neither. Given Quinn Emanuel's conclusion as an independent third party, the board has the opportunity to correct a previously made poor decision. It is your job as the main governance body of this institution to make sure everyone is treated both fairly and consistently. Since the Quinn Emanuel report highlights that this wasn't the case for Dean Gupta, we look forward to this being addressed both promptly and directly by the Board of Trustees and resulting in a swift reinstatement of his deanship effective immediately. This is the board's chance to demonstrate it seeks the right and fair decision for the MSU community. Failure to do so would simply be more of the same old Spartans. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today, and go green.
Anthony, thank you very much. We'll next have Chandler Jones, followed by Alec McCurry via Zoom. Uh, good morning, Chandler.
Good morning. To the esteemed members of the Board of Trustees, let us remember that progress is not achieved by timidity, but by boldness and courage in the face of challenge. I stand before you today with a deep conviction that every student deserves the opportunity to reach their fullest potential. My name is Chandler Jones. I'm a rising senior part of the accelerated master's program in construction management, and I'm an employee at the MSU Recycling Center. I also proudly serve as the president of Michigan State Men's Water Polo Club. It seems Michigan State is at a crossroads. We have the opportunity to invest in the future of our students and demonstrate our commitment to excellence or to settle for mediocrity, stagnation. The decision to exclude, uh, the decision to exclude an aquatic center from the new student recreation center is a misguided one that fails to recognize the transformative impact it would have on the student body. Let me be clear. The current facilities at IM West, IM Circle, and Jensen Fieldhouse are inadequate, outdated, and fail to meet the needs of the students. Club sports such as mine, Michigan, or men's water polo are forced to practice at times as late as ten thirty PM, followed by early eight AM classes. We've been forced to make cuts to our club due to safety concerns of overcrowding. We cannot host tournaments because our pool is not regulation size. This is not the environment that fosters growth and success for all students. A new auditorium would be a testament to our commitment to providing tools and resources necessary for our Spartan community to thrive. The national success of our aquatic clubs, despite the limitations at IM West, speak vo- speak volumes about the tenacity and work ethic of students at Michigan State. It's time to provide them the environment they deserve. We must not settle for being an overcrowded forest, depriving our students of the healthy environments they need to thrive. We must be a flourishing campus, providing spacious and modern facilities that allow our students to grow and feel belonging. The decision to invest in an aquatic center is not just about varsity sports, but about investing in the future of our student body and sending the message that Michigan State is committed to excellence, innovation, and inclusion. It's worth noting that all but two schools in the Big Ten have a fifty-meter pool. The failure to provide a proper aquatics facility would be an unacceptable deviation from the standard set forth by ourselves and by our peers. I implore the Board of Trustees to reconsider their decision and join us in this exciting and courageous vision for Michigan State's future. A thirty to fifty-dollar raise in the student recreation fee would be a small price to pay for the opportunity to invest in the future success of Spartans and demonstrate our commitment to one another. Let us rise above the challenges and obstacles that have stood in our way. As Spartans, it is our duty to be determined, resilient, and optimistic. We in the aquatic community remain so. Now I ask, will the Board of Trustees join us in finding a solution to support the needs of students? Or will our teams be forced to take yet another step back?
Thank you. Thank you very, uh, much, Chandler. Uh, our next speaker is Alec, uh, McCurry, uh, uh, via Zoom, followed by Emiliano Stockdale Gray. Uh, Alec, can you hear us?
Yes, I-
Good morning, Alec. Alec, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Dear Board of Trustees, many Broad College constituents applauded the board when it retained Quinn Emanuel to investigate the dismissal of Dean Gupta because the reasons for his dismissal never matched the facts. I appreciate the recent release of this report as an important step in providing due and fair process to Dean Gupta. The Quinn Emanuel report makes it clear that Dr. Woodruff, the Faculty and Academic Affairs Office, and the Office of General Counsel did not act in good faith and failed in their duties. The hundred-and-four-page report reveals some important facts. Dr. Woodruff's statements could not be supported by factual record or applicable university policies. FAZA and OGC improperly interfered in the OIE investigation, which is in violation of the Michigan State University and Department of Justice Title IX Agreement. University processes put in place to protect employees were either ignored or not followed. The incident was reported several times to the OIE in a timely manner, and students were never put at risk as suggested by Dr. Woodruff. Dean Gupta's due process was denied. Twenty-two university employees did not cooperate with a Board of Trustee requested investigation. Did they have something to hide? Or did they fear retribution after Dr. Woodruff told employees they did not have to cooperate? Lastly, and most important, the report concludes that the personnel actions taken against Dr. Gupta appear disproportionate, out of sequence with the underlying investigation, and based on a factual record that included errors and omissions of relevant information and context. The Q- Quinn Emanuel report also touches on Doc- on Dean Gupta's strong record as a dean at MSU, which I wholeheartedly believe cannot be overstated. He has been a tremendous asset both to the Broad College of Business and Michigan State University. The truth is now known and documented. The Board of Trustees has exhausted significant resources to seek this truth and now needs to follow its own bylaws and the code of conduct and ethics of the board. With, with a costly lawsuit and impossible further embarrassment for Michigan State University staring at us, it is time for the board to do what is in the best interest of Michigan State University and reinstate Dean Gupta. This decision would be supported by many alumni, students, and the Broad College faculty, who, as you know, have sent another statement of support for this action to the board. I believe this decision needs to be a Board of Trustee decision because the administration has made, has had many months to correct this wrongful dismissal and has not shown any willingness to act in good faith. Trustee Scott, back in the December meeting, board meeting, you mentioned to Dean Gupta that after the board gets the final QE report, we quote, "promise to make it right." Well, now is the time for the board to make things right. Reinstate Dean Gupta. Go Green.
Alec, thank you, uh, very much. Uh, I understand some of our next speakers may not, uh, join us, but I will sort of double-check and make sure that they um, have an opportunity to speak. So we have, uh, on the list Emiliano Stockdale Gray, uh, um, followed by Forrest Shrapkowitz. Emiliano, are you with us? Seeing not, uh, we will next move to Forrest Shrapkowitz, followed by Hannah Honeycutt. Forrest? Seeing, uh, uh, no, uh, Forrest, um. Then we will, uh, move to Hannah Honeycutt, uh, followed by Joe Gaza. Hannah, are you with us? Yep. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, my name is Valen Krikor, um, Sunrise, and I'm a member of the Sunrise Movement. Hannah Emiliano and Forrest were not able to make it, so I thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Sunrise Movement and on behalf of those three speakers. It has been, it has been two months, one week, and one day since the senseless attack on our community, and nothing we say will resolve our grief, pain, and trauma. Our hearts break for everyone impacted by this tragedy, especially Brian Fraser, Alexandria Werner, and Ariel Anderson, the students who suffered weeks in the hospital, and their families. No one should ever have to live through what our community has. We, the Sunrise Movement at Michigan State University, send our love to our fellow Spartans as we continue to heal together. Many of us call Michigan State University home. However, over the last two months, we felt immense fear in places that once brought us joy, comfort, and peace. While we are a generation raised on mass shootings, we will never accept that tragedy is normal or inevitable. We are determined to create a better world, free from violence in all forms. We hope that steps like the reopening of the Union will help us reclaim the spaces that we felt were lost to violence. As we continue to grieve, we are confronted with the question, where do we go from here? We are grateful for the steps that the Michigan Legislature has taken in this regard to pass gun violence prevention legislation in the past month. However, we also acknowledge that true justice, healing, and safety will not come from the state, especially one that has violence and dispossession at its foundations. Instead, we must build new ways forward and stand with the movements and communities realizing our collective liberation. We appreciate and stand with and solidarity with those groups and students on campus that have been working in this regard to end gun violence in our community for years and have stepped up to lead the fight when we needed it most. The fight to end gun violence is deeply intertwined with the fight for environmental justice and with all movements to end oppression. A better world is possible only through the collective struggle for justice, and through these movements, we reaffirm our right to live. This includes resisting the urge to swing towards drastic security measures that expand the power of the police state and serve only to perpetuate a climate of fear, insecurity, and distrust. Only through building communities based in justice and our shared humanity can we create a safe campus. It is our job to move through the world with radical love to create and demand the change we need. To everyone in the room, we call on you to be in community with those around you. It starts by building connections and beginning to interact with each other in ways that affirm your humanity rather than take it away from you. To the Board of Trustees and university administrators here today, the path to rebuilding a culture of transparency and trust must start here and now with you. It will not come through militarized policing and surveillance, nor through withholding six thousand documents surrounding the Nassar scandal that the community has a right to access in order to hold this institution accountable. Listen to what the community has, is calling on you to do today and meet the moment through transparent governance and policies that allow us to trust and care for each other. Our lives depend on it. Through radical love and radical change, we create unity and a better world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker this morning will be Joe Garza. Uh, good morning, Joe.
My name is Joe Garza. I'm the president of the Administrative Professional Supervisors Association, representing thirteen hundred members, and I serve as the chair of the Coalition of Labor Organizations. As you know, the support staff unions have made a request for a general wage increase. This occurred because after the June twenty twenty-two budget was approved, showing significant increases to faculty and academic staff compensation, which we support, the university contacted us knowing we would want to discuss additional compensation. We made our initial request to the university in August twenty twenty-two, and we have had multiple conversations with university leadership. We have been patiently waiting for a response. We understand that the Board of Trustees approves the budget for the upcoming fiscal year in June. We want to ensure that our request is given the attention it deserves when you discuss and make decisions about compensation. We are willing to engage with you in your work sessions to further explain our request and rationale. There's a great deal of justification for this request, as I stated, and the presidents of ASME fifteen eighty-five Sean Starr, CTU Deb Bittner, and APA Martin McDonough also stated to you at your last meeting on February tenth, twenty twenty-three. Briefly, those key justifications are, when the university was concerned about its financial position, it came to its employees for concessions. We worked through those issues and arrived at an agreement that helped the university and preserved some important benefits for employees. When the university established it was in a better position, the university took steps to remedy some of those concessions, and we appreciate that effort. While the academic staff has seen compensation gains, again, which we fully support, those similar compensation gains have not been realized by the support staff. In her State of the University address, interim president Woodruff noted that the university's financial health has remained solid. She also said that the impact inflation is real and compensation is our top priority. Additionally, in MSU's strategic plan for twenty thirty, it calls for investing in faculty and staff to attract and retain great people. The support staff members made sacrifices to help ensure the success of MSU during uncertain times, and those sacrifices continue. We believe your approval of a general wage increase would go a long way towards acknowledging equity across campus and investing to retain great people. I have been here almost forty years, and I've seen the dedication of our support staff. They have always been committed to MSU and the success of MSU. Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue with you. We look forward to your response.
Thanks. Thank you very much, uh, Joe. Interim President Woodruff, that concludes this morning's public comments.
Thank you. I now call upon Chairperson Rima Vassar to present the liaison reports, the chairperson's report, and trustee comments.
We will now hear from the student liaisons.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of President Hannah Jeffrey from COGS to, uh, deliver the address from the Graduate Students Council. Good morning. The Council of Graduate Students recently said farewell to its graduating executive board members and the full council members. We will miss them, but we also thank them for all the great work they have done for COGS. At our last full council meeting of the year last Wednesday, COGS elected our new vice president of internal affairs, director of equity and anti-discrimination, director of event planning, parliamentarian, and the medical school lab. We are very grateful to have a full executive board once again this year. We also heard presentations from three external speakers, including the Board of Trustees' own trustee Kelly Tabby and the university ombudsman person, Dr. Shannon Lynn Burton. During this time, the students asked good questions about future of university and their rights as a student. We thank them for taking the time to be there. We also invited all COGS representatives to attend a listening session with the search committee tasked with finding the next president of the MSU. This will take place on April twenty-sixth from three to four PM on Zoom. In preparation for the event, we have sent out surveys asking representatives who cannot attend for any feedback they have about the process. We hope that as many representatives will po- will participate as possible to make the broader graduate student voices heard and understood. The leaders of the CO- leaders of COGS will continue to work with graduate students, MSU administration, MSU faculty, and the other interest groups throughout the summer to ensure the solutions to the challenges they face regarding DEI and RVSM policies are found. Issues that have been brought to us include DEI issue wherein a graduate student felt targeted by anti-LGBTQ two-plus statements posted by, uh, MSU faculty on social media. Regarding RVSM, COGS continue to work with MSU administration and policy to understand how to best serve the survivors of MSU and Nassar. Lastly, we are addressing the concerns that have risen from graduate students about them not being able to finish their graduate studies in timely manner due to interruptions that have happened during their time here, such as COVID and the February thirteenth shootings. The fact that graduate students consistently found themselves being unable to apply for time off due to mental health concerns recently is just one example of how they have been underserved in the times of crisis, leading to a prolonging of the education and research. We believe that the new office of for resource and support coordination could offer these students solutions to their unjust troubles if the office employees are aware of their situation. Thank you for your time today.
It works. Um, hello, everyone. I'm Belle Letcher. I am the president of RHA, MSU's Residence Hall Association. I represent all the students on campus in our residence halls. Um, first, I want to congratulate our new president-elect, Taylor Sutton. Um, they could not be here tonight, but I'm very, very excited to see what they do next year, and they will be taking my place in the June meeting. Um, secondly, and lastly, I don't have a lot to say. Um, I want to discuss once again the second-year live-on requirement. It is no secret that it is wildly unpopular with the student body, and frankly, it just doesn't make much sense. It's something that looked great on paper, but we now have the evidence that it hasn't worked at all. It simply doesn't make sense that we have a huge body of upper class who want to live on campus and a huge number of underclass who want to live off campus, and so everyone loses. On top of that, it is a Spartan's right to spend four years on this campus, and it's really, really sad to see that go. This semester, we had to turn away freshmen um, from living on campus because there is no space left. And so freshmen who arrived this spring were forced to live off campus, which is the exact opposite of what this policy set out to do. It was a great idea. It wasn't great in practice. We tried. It failed. It was a great idea. It wasn't great in practice. We tried. It failed. It's time to repeal it. Thank you.
Hey, y'all. It should surprise no one that unlike Belle, I have a lot to say. So hello, everyone. For those who don't know me, and for the last time in this space, my name is Joe Kovac, and I am the current ASMSU and undergraduate student body president. However, the 60th session of our General Assembly has spent the past three nights until around 2:00 a.m. in the Student Services Building every night, electing our new Office of the President. So first, I'm going to have Emily Hoyampa stand up. Let me introduce you to our 60th session student body president, Emily Hoyampa. Emily is a junior studying social relations and policy who's been in ASMSU her entire undergraduate career, spending this past year as our Associate Vice President for Internal Administration, as the Treasurer of the Asian Pacific American Student Organization, and as the Executive Director of the Association of Big Ten Students. I'm more than excited to see all that I know that she and the rest of the 60th Session Office of the President are going to do this year. All right. To finish out my time as a student liaison, here are my last updates and tidbits for the board, many of which are pretty heavy. To begin, at our last meeting of the 59th Session General Assembly, we passed 30 pieces of legislation, one of which was Bill 59-100, to allocate $10,000 to the creation of a memorial bench for those we lost on February 13. We understand that the university is looking into, thank you, is looking into larger memorialization efforts, but we're grateful to the university for working with us to create a space for students to continue to mourn that was created by students. Our hope is that students can create their own traditions at this bench to forever honor Brian, Ariel, and Alex. My hope is that Ariel, Al, and Brian never just become names or simply moments of silence. They were Spartans who shared this home with us, we went to classes with, and we were in clubs with, and whose presence will forever be felt here and by all Spartans affected on February 13. To continue with the heaviness, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. ASMSU passed Bill 5990, recognizing as such just a couple weeks ago. Let me begin here by saying deans should absolutely be held to a higher standard. If my entire organization of undergraduate students understands how to and consistently mandatory reports issues we hear about, no matter if we know someone else already has, a dean should absolutely be doing the same. We stand with interim President Woodruff's decision, and seeing and writing many of the recommendations to our policies that survivors have been asking for for years for $1.6 million feels like a slap in the face. Further, it is far too noticeable that there is something absent from this agenda that would allow survivors to heal and even just begin to receive the closure this university owes them. I'm disappointed in this board for not voting to release the 6,000 documents related to the Larry Nassar case. This board wants to show actual support for survivors. Thank you. If this board wants to show actual support for survivors and steps in transparency, then take a public vote on this matter. You're in an elected position. Make decisions in public where your constituents can see them. My hope for this board going forward is an openness to engage with students in a more proactive way. We hope for a cores and cops student liaison seat to the board. We hope for liaison seats on board committees. We hope for engagement on the reintroduction of Spartan swim and dive. We hope for an aquatic center built with the new IM building, and we hope for better communication between the students and the board as we go forward with more searches for leadership. Listen to us. We're here every single day. We know the issues, and we want to work with you all, as well as our administrators, to fix them. Oh, also, a 7% increase in room and board rates without a subsequent increase in student employment wages is incredibly inhumane. And finally, I have spent this entire year reacting to everything happening at this university, and this has been one hell of a year reacting. Student leaders, including myself, take on these positions because of how much we care about our fellow students. I've had the immense privilege of being able to represent 40,000 amazing undergraduate Spartans this year, along with my fellow Office of the President, including my amazing Vice President for Academic Affairs, Erin Iturralde, who has spent the past two years and countless hours being one of the best advocates for students that I have ever seen. At this meeting last year, my predecessor Georgia Frost introduced me to you all for the first time and ended her report by stating that she looked forward to ending out her term and being able to be just Georgia. And in a similar vein, and although I've loved every moment with my wonderful Spartans, I'm looking forward to graduating in just 15 days and being just Joe with a heart that will forever be in East Lansing, no matter where I go. Forever and always, go green.
I want to thank the students who are rolling off for your service. It's been a pleasure to to serve and work with you and to see your advocacy for students in action. We will now hear the fact that.
Good morning. First, I want to wish our Muslim and Muslim-American neighbors and friends a happy Eid al-Fitr. I hope I pronounced that correctly. With the presidential search now underway, with advertised community listening sessions, I hope that you all will try to attend at least one of the sessions, and if possible, more than one. Although understanding that multiple constituencies are vying for seats on the search committee, the faculty are the largest, and a possible three to four slots is too few and not proportional to past search committees. I urge you to include as many faculty as last time, which was six. We have solicited volunteers and received 82 stellar applications. Faculty have stepped up to participate in this most important task, and they are outstanding. The faculty on the steering committee are reviewing those applications next week and providing the slate of nominees we have recommended represent this large constituency. This is a low-hanging fruit opportunity, and it would instill confidence and engender trust in the search process for you to give extra weight to and to prioritize the names faculty put forward. I appreciate that the trustees followed through on their commitment to release the Quinn Emanuel Report. Although the investigation and the way it was conducted remain concerning, the report confirms what was already clear. A dean and at-will employee violated the policy, was asked to resign, and resigned. Spending millions of dollars, $1.6 million plus whatever else was spent in the last three months, investigating an at-will employee's resignation and damaging the university's reputation is inconsistent with the trustees fiduciary duty. As always, the goal of our shared work moving forward is to serve the best interests of MSU, and the report's policy recommendations will be given consideration. As a university, we must ensure that our policies are sound and reflective of our values and that those entrusted with leadership positions not only follow those policies, like mandatory reporting, but exhibit good judgment. Chairperson Jamie Allen for the University Committee on Faculty Affairs submitted the faculty raise recommendation to the faculty senate on Tuesday, April 18. UCFA has issued a clear, thoughtful, and evidence-based rationale for the faculty raise. Recruitment, retention, and equity are key considerations. The 2324 housing and dining rate recommendation is a 6.95% increase due to inflation. Historically, raises have been approved to account for inflation, and last year's raise, the largest since 1988, is appreciated, but inflation remains high and affects all MSU employees. When inflation is high, it makes sense to increase salaries. It is imperative for MSU employees to receive fair and equitable compensation for the incredible work they do at this great institution. We all receive a green and white paycheck and should be compensated appropriately. Our coworkers, as reported by Joe Garza, are indeed earning a 5% general wage increase by coming to work and doing their jobs every day. Providing fair compensation aligns with our strategic goals across several domains, and it is the path forward to continued greatness. Vice Chair Anthony, and my term ends in August, and I have chosen not to run for a second term. To the faculty, we thank you. Shared governance matters, and it is vital to higher education. We have been doing the hard, the good, and the necessary work for the betterment of this great university. To our fellow Michiganders, MSU employees and students are doing excellent work, as evidenced by what we heard in the president's report, as evidenced by the presentation by Megan Hill, as evidenced by what EVP Beauchamp shared with us about the preparation we do for health professional students in the state. Please encourage your legislators to give our great institution the funding we need by increasing our state appropriations. This is the first meeting after the shooting. And to the Michigan Legislature, we want to thank you for passing, and you, Governor Whitmer, for signing into law the recent gun legislation. Our work continues as we focus on building access, other campus safety improvements, and community well-being. We have been committed to robust academic governance. To President Woodruff and Provost Jaishko, we have all worked in a swirl of difficulties to achieve some incredibly positive outcomes for this university, but there is much work to be done. Thank you both for your partnership and your active engagement with shared governance. You not only stated that you valued shared governance, but you acted upon those stated values. To Joe Kovac and Erin Iturralde, leadership of ASMSU, a public letter of recommendation. You all have been remarkable, courageous leaders, and invaluable partners to us in this work of shared governance. You have been thoughtful, compassionate, and passionate in support of students and the best interests of this university. You will now graduate and go on to make MSU even prouder than we already are. We appreciate your incredible service. We thank the board for the steps you have taken on professional development. Vice Chair Anthony was the one who pushed forward that resolution in the faculty senate. We issued that resolution for this action, and you are following through. We look forward to more as you determine your core guiding principles, and we accept your assurances that the public will see tangible results from your development activities. Lastly, we are in this together. We have different perspectives and experiences, and we need to work through issues collaboratively within the framework of academic governance. I have said it before, and I will repeat it here. Academic governance is a verb. It is the work we do. Let us do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Karen Kelly Blake, and thank you, Stephanie Anthony, for your service. I do want to just raise what I raised yesterday, the fact that you two are pioneers in many ways. Two African-American women serving as co-chairs has never happened. Also, the fact that you are not on the tenure track, that you are literally representing the whole university as the liaisons is really unprecedented and pioneering. And congratulations on your award from the BFSA Day for being a pioneer. Thank you for your work. So the first part of my remarks is around the scholarship award recipients. This semester, a record-breaking 206 graduating students were recognized by the Michigan State University Board of Trustees for achieving the highest scholastic average of 4.0 GPA. Each semester, students graduating with a 4.0 are presented with the Board of Trustees Award for their academic excellence. I'm still looking for the names, but they're not showing up, so eventually, oh, okay, here we go. I'm looking. Additionally, each awardee will be acknowledged during their individual commencement ceremonies in May and will receive a $1,000 stipend from the university in recognition of their accomplishment. As we take a minute to scroll through the names on the screen, please commend their academic achievement. They've worked hard. This particular class has gone through myriad changes, struggles, and have triumphed. And so I just want to take a moment to give them a hand clap as they scroll through the names. I'm honored to congratulate these students on their hard work and dedication and wish them success with their future endeavors. A lot has happened. I think that March made me feel like it should be November. Like, I don't even know what's happening. It's gone by so fast. I'm going to highlight a couple of noteworthy events that I attended. There were so many activities that I'm sure I'm missing. Really awesome activities on this campus, but I'll tell you about the ones that I was able to attend. The Cranes Newsmaker event, we have an alumnus, Matt Ishbia, that I want to congratulate. He was named the Cranes Newsmaker of the Year, which is a big honor. He's been a staunch financial supporter of our esteemed institution and a devoted protege of Coach Izzo. He is a proud Spartan who bleeds green and white, and we're proud to call him our own. The next event was in Detroit as well, MSU in the 313, and it was on 313, which I thought was awesome. On March 13th, I attended that event where more than 200 Detroiters gathered to celebrate fellow Spartans and business leaders who've been named among the Detroit 500 by D Business, which is a real magazine that I had no knowledge of before this event. So it was spectacular. Interim President Woodruff and Patty Galaza, MSU alum and Vice President of Invest Detroit Ventures, a big influence in Detroit right now in terms of the resurgence of Detroit, shared some of our outstanding initiatives and community partnerships that are fueling our renaissance in Detroit, namely MSU's Burgess Institute for Entrepreneurship and Innovation, which since starting in 2016 has supported students who have developed 700 startups and raised $57.9 million to fund their ventures and keep building. That's a big deal. As well as MSU's 30-year partnership with Henry Ford Health and recently announced new community development in Detroit's new center neighborhood. A project sponsored by MSU, Henry Ford Health, and Tom Gores of the Detroit Pistons. The project will turn the neighborhood into a vibrant community with residential, commercial, and retail in other spaces. I think the Henry Ford partnership is one that's super important for various reasons, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Beauchamp, for heading that work. It was a great opportunity, and it prompted important discussions on how collaborations among businesses and universities can advance the region in meaningful ways and really double down on our commitment to the state of Michigan and its development. It's a pleasure. It was a pleasure to commit and nosh with remarkable Spartans who are committed to furthering their good work in that region and to learn more about what the future of the work will will take on. I also, in Detroit, was able to join Broad College interim Dean Judith Whipple and 120 distinguished guests at the Detroit Executive Forum. This forum featured impressive panelists of outstanding Broad College alum who shared their professional journeys and experience with the audience. They were supply chain folks. And so a lot of the things that you talked about, Benny, around eggs, they were able to explain why we weren't able to get eggs on time and what inflation has done in terms of supply chain logistics, business development, and packaging. So it was very informative. And speaking of packaging, the school of packaging yesterday, it was trustee T. Bay and trustee Scott and I were able to attend the School of Packaging Building Ribbon Cutting event. And those renovations are actually beautiful. It's just not a regular building. It's gorgeous. And I want to thank, again, the donors for their investments in one of the country's leading packaging programs. I believe it's the only one with the PhD in the country. So they're doing big things, and this expansion will provide students with innovative spaces for learning and collaboration. The Feeding the First Responders Project that trustee Dino headed up, I just want to recognize you for your work. You and Raina, your partner, provided lunch and dinner to first responders to thank them for all that they do. This is the kind of work that I think trustees should be engaged in. And since coming on the board, you've taken time to show appreciation, and your effort is commended by me but noticed by our community. So thank you for your personal sacrifice time and talent. And then lastly, I do want to address February 13th. And I want to, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, take a moment to thank everyone in our community who responded on that day and have continued to provide our Spartan family with astounding care and compassion. Last night, I told MSUPD and other safety workers that our community's response to this moment reminds me of someone I quote often, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who I look for in terms of an example of radical love and radical transformation and radical change and justice. I look to him for examples of how to love, and one of his quotes struck me that day. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. And over the past couple of months, Spartans, time and time again, have provided one another with love and empathy. And in doing so, you have shined a bright, green light of hope and resilience and love and grace to so many people. We have amazing first responders who selfishly rushed into action to serve and protect on the night of February 13th. Health and wellness professionals have stepped up and have offered counseling and other critical support to our students, our faculty, and our staff. I'm just so moved by the caring faculty who adjusted curriculums to meet student needs. Alums and broader community have donated their time, their energy, their financial resources and support for our collective recovery. Our outstanding student body just amazed me with their kindness. They organize so quickly with positivity from everything, from encouraging signs on campus to the Spartan Sunday cleanup efforts, that big event where people were giving out hugs and T-shirts. I say all of this, not just as a member of the board in the Spartan community, but as a mother whose daughter stayed in her apartment for four hours. I think five sheltered in place. And just knowing that you all were here kept me from getting on the highway. Knowing that she was safe in this Spartan community kept me from driving just to hug her. I'm so grateful to you. I'm so many ups. Please know that the board is here to support you. I apologize for. I promise you, last week I read through this and I had no problems. But grief takes on so many different forms, and I feel like you're over it, and sometimes you're just not. So all of you, just take the time to do what you need to do to grieve. Take the time to feel who you are in that moment and locate what you need for yourself. And once you've done that, do that for others. We experienced this tragedy together, and we will be here for one another. Please continue to give yourself grace. Take care of yourselves. I'll continue to pray for us. I say their names. Alex, Ariel, Brian, and I speak peace to their families and to their friends. I'll also continue to give thanks to all of you here today and across the university. I'm grateful. And I thank you all, Spartans, for the light you bring to our community, helping to drive out the darkness. I am inspired by all of you and grateful to be in this special community. Go Green!
Thank you very much, Chair Bassar. We'll now move into trustee comments. I will start with Vice Chair Kelly.
Thank you. First of all, I join with Chair Bassar with regard to the February 13th tragedy. I'd also like to just point out, this is a little off-script, that I think the entire community has to have a significant recognition for our new chair, who in the past four months has not only worked harder than anyone I've seen on this board, but is a great representative for this Board of Trustees. We're lucky we selected her, and I want to thank her personally. With that said, there are a couple of recognitions, and I want to thank the interim president for giving me a heads up on this. First of all, we have received a NASCAR grant. Associate Professor David Ferguson of MSU received his first NASCAR grant to study heat exhaustion in race car vehicles during competitions. Throughout the next year, Ferguson and his team will attend high-profile NASCAR races throughout the country to collect data. And that sounds pretty exciting. With regard to faculty success, this year's recipient of the president's distinguished teaching award is Susan Mastin, professor and associate chair for undergraduate studies in the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering. The award recognizes Mastin's approach to teaching, extending her knowledge beyond the classroom setting and empowering her students to be a force for change. Professor Emeritus David Arson received the Champion of Children Award and the Michigan Association of Superintendents in Administration. The award recognizes individuals who have made significant contributions to improving the quality of education in Michigan. Fahar Abasi, Assistant Professor in the College of Osteopathic Medicine, has been named as one of the top 15 women in the nation to be honored at the Women of Frontlines, celebrating women faith leaders celebration. That concludes my comments with regard to recognitions. And I know that it's been a long meeting, but there are some additional comments that I would like to make. These have to do in response to the Attorney General's request of April 14th, last Friday, of the Board of Trustees. Earlier this week, I informed the board that I decided to recuse from the board's decision and or action with regard to the Attorney General's request. This is the first time in six-plus years that I've recused from a vote, and because I take it very seriously, I think there's some explanation. First, I took office on this Board of Trustees in January of 2018, approximately 14 months after Larry Nassar was arrested, terminated, and I believe jailed. I never sat on this board during any period of time that Larry Nassar was an employee of this university. Following that, within the first couple of months of my position as a trustee, I participated in and supported the board's decision to refer this matter to the Attorney General for an investigation. As part of that investigation, I personally volunteered to submit my cellphone, laptop emails, and this included personal work and MSU documents for a download and a review by a third party, which occurred within, I believe, approximately the first six months that I was on this Board of Trustees. In addition to that, I participated in a criminal investigation and interview with the Michigan State Police. I did all of that, knowing fully well that I had no documents or communications at any time while Larry Nassar was an employee of this university. But I did so voluntarily because I believed that a full investigation of Larry Nassar was important. Within a year, I also chaired a subcommittee of the Board of Trustees that included Nancy Schlichting, Brianna Scott, and I believe Brian Mosalem, whose purpose was to meet with survivor representatives to come up with a scope, a request for proposal, to conduct an independent investigation of the Nassar matter. We met, myself and others, personally with survivor representatives over the course of about four to six months. We came up with that RFP. We developed a scope. We went out for bid. We interviewed multiple law firms for the purposes of conducting the independent investigation. And we came back to the board, the full board, with a recommendation to hire a law firm to conduct that investigation. As part of that work with the survivor representatives, and it was not homogeneous, let me tell you, homogeneous. There are differences within the survivors' community, and I understand that. But we were working through the very issues that unfortunately still are in front of us. The issue of waivers, access to documents. But the point was is that we were joined together to try to work through that to get through an independent investigation. When they came back to the board, the board decided to not move forward. Fast forward to last Friday. We received the request from the Attorney General requesting the release of additional documents. Within hours of that request becoming public, I personally began to receive media inquiries, and these are by way of voicemail, asking me whether or not I was going to recuse from the decision because I had a conflict. Now, as offensive to me as that is, the conflict, as explained to me in the voicemail, was because the Attorney General had specifically named me in the request related to the same documents that I talked about that were produced back in 2018. I am only one of two board members currently on the board who was specifically named by the Attorney General. So again, while it's offensive to me that someone would claim that I have a conflict, I understand. And after reviewing it, I do not believe it's appropriate that I engage in any decision with regard to the response to the Attorney General. The documents, I fully complied with every request that I've had over the last six months, or six years, I should say. It's very clear to me that I dealt that anything involving any communication of mine is the subject of the investigation. But I also recognize that there will be some that claim that I have a conflict, and that I should step back. And so again, I notified the board earlier this week that I'm recusing myself from any decision related to a response to the Attorney General. And with that, I appreciate the time, and I thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kelly. Trustee Byram is not here with us this morning. She was unable to join us today due to unexpected travel delays. She regrets obviously not being with us. We will now go sort of in alphabetical order, starting with trustee Dino.
Thank you. You know, to the Nassar survivors, their parents, their families. Only thing I can say to you, so I'm sorry. I'm sorry a great university can just be, at times, really shitty. I don't know what else to say. I too want to wish our Muslim friends a wonderful and joyous holiday. Want to dovetail off something Chair Bassar said that, I think it was April 17th, we had food trucks for lunch and dinner for every single law enforcement entity that was here on campus. On February 13th, that was a way to thank them for everything they did for our community. We had about 100 law enforcement officials show up, which was great. We delivered 20 lunches and 20 dinners to dispatch, you know, the 911 Center, Ingham County 911 Center. And we delivered 20 dinners to Lansing Police, Lansing Police Night Shift. As far as the Presidential Search Committee, some of you know I'm the chair of that committee. I'm very honored and humbled to be leading the process to find our permanent president, our 22nd president. Trustee Scott's the vice chair. Trustee Kelly and Kanaki Jefferson will be joining us. I'm really excited about this committing. I'm excited about building out the larger committee. It's going to be a large, robust, diverse committee. Isaacson Miller has been selected as the executive search firm to assist in the process. They are the same firm also currently assisting the university with the selection of the next vice president for civil rights and Title IX, education and compliance, and other executive positions in MSU colleges. And even though they helped pick the University of Michigan president, we still decided to hire them. Community listening sessions began on April 14th. The next one will take place at 6:00 PM, Monday, April 24th, continuing through Friday, April 28th. All sessions are held virtually and are available online. You can find more and info at presidentialsearch.msu.edu. And last thing, I just want to reiterate my comments in the January board meeting, where I just want to thank law enforcement for all you do for our communities to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dino. Trustee Pierce.
Thank you, Stefan. Let me just make a few comments of those that are present today. First of all, Megan Hill, for your commitment to working on really breakthrough technology in the medical field that will not only save lives but extend lives. Thank you. To Bell, and to Joe, and to Hannah. Thank you for advocating for undergraduate and graduate students. Thank you for bringing issues that we need to hear. And thank you for recognizing and really celebrating all of your accomplishments in the undergraduate and graduate programs. Thank you. To Karen and Stephanie. Thank you for all of the work that you have done representing the faculty, the foundation of Michigan State University, and for Jamie and Deanne for continuing your services as liaisons. As I think about the faculty of Michigan State University, and I think about the events that are going on, not only in this campus, which we've talked about today, but in the world with the political divisiveness and the global pandemic and the war on Ukraine and the economic uncertainty, and then everything going on in this campus. You, the faculty, are preparing our students. You're preparing the next generation to face every obstacle and every opportunity with perseverance and determination and the will of a Spartan. And so for that, we are very grateful. I want to thank Dr. Rema for your comments today. I really do appreciate you, on behalf of the board, everything that you said I'm completely aligned with. So thank you for that, and thank you for your leadership, which has been exceptional. I do want to spend a minute, if I can, on something that's coming up on April 29th that I want everyone to be familiar with and I'm very excited about. It's called the Empower Her Leadership Retreat. And it was started by the former Michigan State basketball coach, Suzie Merchant. And it's a one-day retreat. It focuses on empowering girls by teaching them skills to overcome challenges that they may face in their life. This year, nearly 400 are registered to participate. It's the highest number we've had. And they're from fourth through ninth grade, nine-to-15-year-old girls. Think about that, coming from all over Michigan, 20 counties represented. Classes and workshops are going to be put on, designed for every age range to cater to their current experiences and things that they might experience in life. I think it's fabulous that MSU is doing this, and I do appreciate it. And finally, to those of you that came forward today and in previous board meetings with public comments, I want you to know that And finally, to those of you that came forward today and in previous board meetings with public comments, I want you to know that as the Board of Trustees, we are listening. We do care, and we are committed to fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Pierce. Trustee Scott did let me know before she left that obviously she is listed yet, but is not in a position with the audio to offer the comments at this at this time. Trustee T Bay.
Thanks, Stefan. I just want to echo Dr. Bassar's comments regarding February thirteenth and also trustee Dano's comments as well. Also want to let you know, Dan, that you missed out on the tour of the Kinesiology School yesterday, where we got to meet Dr. Ferguson, who is running the NASCAR program, which is very cool. And I suggest that when you don't have a walker anymore, that you go see it as well. I really want to thank Rema, you, for your leadership over the last few months. It feels like years, but it is actually, now that I look at it, only been three months and twenty-one days, which is insane to me. I just think that we are all very lucky to have someone who's not afraid to be bold and to tell the truth. And so I'm just very grateful to have you at the helm of this board and continuing to push everyone to be better and do better. So thank you for everything that you do for us. I also want to thank Joe and Belle, who I believe are there still for your leadership. And Stevie as well, who I was told is not present, but Stevie, if you're listening, I very much appreciate working with you over the last year. But Joe, I just I don't even have words to just sort of describe how amazing you are, and I hope you know that. I can't even fathom representing four hundred thou, no, four hundred forty thousand students and taking care of all of their needs and challenges and doing it with such grace and empathy and courage and diligence. I just think you are, I feel very grateful to have spent this last year watching you lead. I think it's, we all are really lucky to have seen what a tremendous leader you are, and I am very much looking forward to seeing what you do with your life, because I know you're going to do really great things and make us all proud, and I just want to thank you so much for all of the time that you've put in over the last year, and especially over these last few months. And Belle, thank you so much for everything that you have done. You are a fabulous advocate for all of the students that are living on campus. And no one could have any doubt in your voice and lifting up their voices of the struggles that you have had in the dorms and in the residence halls over the last year. I'm very excited that you're going to be still with us in the law school, which is super exciting, but I just think that you are fabulous as well, and I'm glad you're not leaving us just yet, because you are a true asset to this community. Emily, if you're still out in the audience, I'm very much looking forward to working with you in the future, and congratulations. And to Taylor, the new president of RHA, looking forward to working with you as well. And Hannah, looking forward to continuing working with you as the leadership in COGS. And lastly, I just want to sort of expand after something that Dr. Rema said about taking care of ourselves. I hope that after we celebrate everyone on graduation weekend, that we take the summer to really take care of one another and take care of yourself and continue to lean on one another when needed and ask for help if you need it. And I hope everyone does get to have a little fun this summer. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee T Bay. Chair Bassar, I believe you have additional comment?
Yes. On behalf of the board, to those who spoke earlier today in public comment, we want you to know that we do hear you. We see you. We see you with trembling voices and shaking knees, come and advocate for what you believe in and what you think is best. And we appreciate you coming every time in your diligence and your persistence. To Valerie and members of the passing and all survivors, your advocacy advocacy has not gone unnoticed. You continue to make positive change. I know that sometimes you don't feel that it's fast enough. The being courageous and fighting for others is sometimes lonely work, and I'm sorry for the pain this institution has caused you and the pain you must feel today. Please know that you are not alone. I must share that in response to the Attorney General's most recent request to waive attorney-client privilege, MSU's general counsel will inform the AG's office that we will not take any new action. Therefore, we will continue to maintain attorney-client privilege. We understand that for those who continue to push for transparency with this particular action, this might not be what you want to hear. Pretty sure it's not. On behalf of the board, please know we are sorry. We recognize that MSU is a continual site of trauma for survivors. We will continue to devote time and resources to facilitate a healing culture for all members of our community, and we're committed to treating you with the respect and care you deserve during this time and during this long, arduous journey that we have ahead of us. I apologize personally and on behalf of this board.
Interim President Woodruff, that interim president Woodruff, that concludes this morning's trustee comments.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So much.
Is there a second?
Support.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? The meeting is adjourned.